All right, it is six o'clock in the absence of President. I'll call the meeting over tonight. In the first order of business, I would receive a motion to approve the Board election results from the last Board election.
Were you allowed to make a motion?
Well, I don't know, new members, not new members, but existing members.
Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Jeff.
Do we have Jeff Stein?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Jeff, we'll do a roll call vote. I'm not used to doing this.
Hi.
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 Motion carries. Okay. So, at this point, we will swear in our new incumbents to the Board, Adam Webb, Matt Hobson, and Brent Colley. If you'll stand over there, we'll give the program to the...
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties, sorry, duties as school director and for the Little Spring School District to the best of your ability according to law? Sorry, guys?
Congratulations. Thank you, guys, for your service. So, I would now receive nominations for President of the Board.
I'll nominate Matt.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I would receive a motion to cease nominations.
So move.
Dig.
The motion is for Matt Gumm as President.
Hi.
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 I'm standing.
Hi.
Motion carries six zero. Matt Gumm is our President. I will now receive nominations for Vice President.
Wrong name.
Matt.
Adam.
Jeff.
Jeff with the second. Any other nominations for Vice President?
I'll move nomination season.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All of us.
Everybody? All right. The motion is for Matt Hobson as Vice President.
Hi.
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 Motion carries six zeros with Matt Hobson second. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll turn the meeting over to our Board President.
How do you work these things?
Thanks, helping with this.
Well, first, I want to say I thank you guys for your confidence, maybe, but your support and your patience with me in this position. I believe that we do things as a Board, as a group, and I think that's the way it's supposed to be, and I think that's the way we do it, and I appreciate everybody's effort in carrying that out. So, we'll move ahead then. Next item of business.
Nominations for MSBA delegate.
All right, so I would receive...
We will attend the MSBA conference in the fall.
Right.
That person would...
Matt and I both will attest that that's a valuable experience.
It is. It was good.
When in the fall?
October?
October. October, I think.
October, right. You will go if it doesn't... I've got my tickets.
Sounds like we got to volunteer, yeah.
I would receive a nomination for Debbie.
I would nominate, yeah. I would nominate.
Second.
Any others? All in favor of Debbie being our representative delegate at MSBA?
Hi.
Hi. This is like on an island somewhere, right?
Kansas City?
The island of Kansas City.
And then we need a motion to appoint Jamie Bryan as Treasurer and Manny Scarborough as Board Secretary.
All right, so I would receive a motion to appoint Jamie Bryan as Treasurer and Manny Scarborough as Secretary of the Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? It just got in by the skin of your...
She's choked up. I know.
So, we're ready to go on to the consent agenda?
Yes, there is one in your agenda. I would like to move the Athletic Director's report to the top so that we can give to our Athletic Director back to the games that are going on here in town, but that's the only change I have.
I'll post that.
All right, so you have the consent agenda in front of you, the agenda and the minutes. Are there any questions concerning the consent agenda? If not, then I would receive a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? All right, and...
I just have some opening statements before we get to Robert. First of all, you have the placemat there with your CSIP goals on it. Your agenda now has the numbering beside each agenda item that matches up with all our CSIP goals, so not something you need to study or really look at hard, but it is nice to remember why we're talking about this specific topic and how it fits with each of those school improvement goals. So, we'll try to continue that each month and keep that there, but just kind of remind you of why we're talking about the items that we're talking about. We have a teacher appreciation cookout that you guys graciously agreed to do on May 11th, and I'll remind you again of that at our May meeting, but I know our teachers always greatly appreciate that. We had a great PD day today. We continued some of our safety trainings with Officer Cunningham, Officer Moore, and Jerry Miller all there to help with that, so that was really good. Had a good fish fry at the bus stop as well, so a good day for our teacher meetings today. We had a bear leadership hike this weekend that our Board President led us on and had the majority of our administrators out in the woods for a day and had some good conversations and a good day to get out and enjoy nature a little bit. Also in front of you, you've got the committee assignments. This is something we probably need to take a look at on the occasion that we swear in some Board members, and we'll have a steady Board for the next year at least. Time to kind of take a look at those committees and see who wants to volunteer as tribute for some of those. We have our Policy Committee. Policy Committee reviews all policy revisions in order to make recommendations back to the Board. Right now, I have Debbie Bryan, Brent Colley, and Matt Hobson on that committee. Is there anyone who would like to get off or on the Policy Committee?
I've been on it for three years, or the three years that I've been on it, so I have interest in other areas, but I don't mind to serve on there if there's somebody else that would like to take my place.
I'll go Policy if you're looking to another one of these.
Okay.
I think it's a good experience for people to maybe rotate through or if somebody's been on a committee for a while, not necessarily have to or anything like that, but I do think it's a good experience for people to be involved in some of these committees.
How many can be on each one? I mean, what are you looking for?
Three. Three, because if you have four, it's a Board meeting.
True.
So, Adam Webb moves. Are you good with the Policy Committee? Okay. And Debbie and Brent want to stay there?
I guess if the President's desires may move them.
We need some, we need some agent. Where's the...
Okay. You got half of that, dude.
Thank you, Brent.
The Finance Committee. This is a committee that, to my knowledge, has not been active in some time. I believe that's an area that would be good to have a smaller Board Committee to dive into the deeper analytical budgetary numbers that we have to work with. This committee will review salary structure, capital projects, budgetary history, forecasts, and trends of school financing, and obviously, those are things, just like the Policy Committee, that will come before the Board at large, but this is an opportunity to get a little deeper into it and then bring the highlights back to the Board. Somebody volunteers to be on our Finance Committee?
We're going to discuss the budget work session later, so we'll have the Finance Committee regardless of whether we choose to have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This will be a committee regardless, Jeff.
Okay.
Scott?
I do have one question. There's still, just like our other committees, we're going to be flexible and try to put the meetings together. They're not real reasonable.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, it won't be the second Monday at cigarette, and we'll just work and whatever schedule works with everybody. So, Matt, Jeff, and Scott on that committee. Is everybody good with that?
Sure. And I'll say, if any of you three cannot make one of the meetings, let me know, and I'll attend at your place.
Perfect.
Thanks. First alternate.
If, yeah.
If so inclined. The only other position is a CSIP representative, and again, that's our Continuous School Improvement Plan. That's where we get our placemats that you have there. Serves as the Board Representative to the Continuous School Improvement Plan right now. That is Mac, but I believe you handed that off?
I handed it off to Jeff Cunningham.
All right.
But I'm not sure if they've met since then, since he resigned, but...
Would someone like to serve on the CSIP?
Probably since he's not actually on it, another committee, that probably...
I am on the Wellness Committee.
That's true. That's the one.
I'll add that.
There needs to be Board Representative.
It's just like the CSIP.
I knew I was missing one.
So, you're pretty familiar with it.
No, I will serve on that CSIP Committee too, but if I'm not able, I'll...
You have the ability to choose someone else to serve for you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your willingness to serve on those committees. I know you give up a lot of time, as it is, being a Board Member, and we'll try not to abuse those committees, but they are valuable to have occasionally throughout the year, so thank you for that. That is all I have this evening, so get back to you.
All right, then I believe we're ready for Mr. James.
Hey, thanks for having me. Dr. Spence asked me to come tonight and talk a little bit about our athletic programs, and you know, it's always good to kind of have a reminder of why we feel it's important to have quality athletic programs and brag a little bit about our coaches and our players a little bit and...
Robert, sorry to interrupt you. Could you come up here?
I can... It's kind of hard for us to turn around. Yeah, no problem. My first time, you know, so I wasn't sure where you wanted.
Over sometimes, I do talk back.
It won't be your last.
I do type up quarterly rotation, you know. You know, we are at the end of our, you know, school year. We're into spring sports, and this is definitely the busiest time of the year for us. So, just, you know, most of y'all know, but I'm just going to kind of tell you what all we have going on right now and some things that we've done this year and some things we're looking forward to in the future. So, like I said, recently, we started our spring sports season, and right now, we've got middle school softball, middle school baseball, middle school track and field, high school baseball, high school softball, boys tennis, golf, high school track and field. So, we got a lot going on. We got kids, coaches, just all over the place every day. We got, right now, if you go down to Booster Field, it's quite the event. That's kind of one reason I'm going first, is back there, we have two high school games going on, and it's fun. It's a fun experience. So, like I said, April is the most challenging month for our district's athletic teams as far as the scheduling, the logistics, and all the moving parts that it takes to kind of make it happen. September is a close second, so we kind of start it off like that and we finish it like that. Often, our coaches are just struggling to find a place to have a practice. If our teams aren't off doing something, if we all have to practice the same day, it's rough, and we kind of talked about that a few years ago when we started our middle school softball, middle school baseball, that, you know, that's a great idea, but you do realize that there's nowhere for them to go, and you know, we're working on that. Talk about that in a minute, but you know, spring's tough, and we're doing the best we can, we're making it work. So, kind of talking about that, between middle school and high school, I looked at it, in the month of April, 30 days, we have 70 different contests all scheduled, just in the month of April. So, you know, many of these days, that's up to six events in one day. So, this puts our resources to the max, to say the least, when it comes to getting subs to cover for our coaches, who are teachers. In the spring, we start early. Our games start a lot earlier in the spring than they do in the winter and even the fall. So, this requires a lot of teams leaving early. You know, that puts a strain on everybody, because you know, they need to be in class. They leave early. We got to get subs for them, and we got to get bus drivers to cover the routes that hold the team. So, there's a lot of stuff going on. You know, a lot of people don't realize that. They just show up to a ballgame, and there they are, it's a good time. There's a lot of stuff going on daily to make it all happen. You know, I think, I deal with it daily, and I can promise you that the teachers, the coaches, the parents, the bus drivers, the administration, the building secretaries, flexibility in the communication that we do is really, really good, and you know, I appreciate, I couldn't do it without them. It just would be impossible to make it all work. Then we get the wet weather, which you all, you know, you see the notices, you know, a short note, we may have to move a game like that with very little notice, so that takes a lot of things to happen real quick, and we're really good at doing that, and that's a tribute to these people I just mentioned. You know, we, Athletic Department, we believe it's important to keep kids involved. I think administration and teachers would all agree, you know, we want kids involved. And you know, as an athletic department, we try to make sure that we're supporting other programs. You know, it's real easy to get focused on your program, and you want what you want, but we understand, you know, the big picture. We want to support everybody. The trend, you know, you guys have heard specializing, you know, that's a trend now. They want specialized. They want to get good, and there's so many opportunities for these kids to play all the time, where, you know, school ball, travel ball, they just roll on to the next thing, and they tend to lose kids. So, we want to make sure that our coaches are doing the best they can to give the kids opportunities to do what they want. You know, that, a lot of that is kind of how you orchestrate your offseason, and you know, we talk about that as a coaching staff, like, you know, we're putting together an offseason, we need to be mindful of, you know, other programs. Recently, you know, just in the few, four, five years that I've been doing this, I've seen more and more schools canceling games because of low numbers. So, you know, that gets you to thinking, okay, what can we do to get our numbers up? You know, and I've called coaches, and we've talked about that. Hey, you can get in the hallway and try to get some more kids out. You know, we're lucky we don't have to do a lot of that right now, but you know, we have had to cancel a JV game a time or two because of low numbers, so we want to get the kids out. To do that, again, it requires more flexibility, consideration when we're planning, like I said, especially our offseason. You know, we talk about, you know, we're, you know, I'm kind of the liaison between Misha, you know, and our school, and they have laid out recently, this is a new thing, is the guidelines that we have for what we can do with our students in the offseason. So, we're trying to kind of, you know, that's how they're trying to help combat this, you know, low numbers thing. So, there are weeks now that we're allowed to have open facilities, and there are weeks now that we're allowed to have practice periods, and that's, I'm talking out-of-season programs. So, those are things y'all may not be aware of that's going on, but you know, those are things that we're trying to schedule behind the scenes to make sure that, you know, it's a fine line, because you want your coaches doing that, but you also don't want to be, hey, we're practicing, you know, don't do that sport, because we have open facility time. So, we're trying to do the best we can to do good at both of those things, but it is a little nicer now that we do have guidelines, and those guidelines are seven-week rotations that we're allowed to do, do things with our kids in the offseason. So, you know, depending on whether or not you're up next, so if you're a fall sport, you know, you've got a practice period right now, you know, and if you're a spring sport, or if you're a winter sport, you have an open facility period right now. No instruction, let the kids play. Okay? So, that's kind of what we're doing right now, the teams that aren't in season. If that makes sense. It's kind of confusing to me too, but you know, we want to win games, we want to compete for championships, and that's why we do it. It's not fun to not have that as your goal, you know, that's what we all strive for. But you know, there are much more important reasons to encourage our kids and students to be involved, and we understand that as, you know, coaching staff and Athletic Department. You know, we believe the reason that it's important for kids to participate in extracurricular activities, the benefits are way beyond playing fields and gyms. You know, this is going to teach our kids accountability, character, and learning to deal with success and failure, because we got to learn how to deal with both of those things when you're a part of a team. You know, our athletes, you know, I was, you know, this is one thing that I'm very proud of with our athletes, and is our athletes' GPA is monitored mid-term and term, and I worry about that a lot, because you know, we want to get on top of that. We don't want to lose athletes because, you know, their grades have fallen, and all of a sudden, I'm going to tell a coach, hey, he can't play, she can't play, and we rarely have to deal with that. Our athletes are some of the best students in our school. You know, our teachers, I'll tell you what, when we catch it, when we catch a problem, our teachers are great to work with us about getting our kids into tutoring if they got practice. You know, our teachers are really good about tutoring our athletes in the morning. You know, we appreciate that. Through the leadership of our coaches, our students and athletes gain invaluable skills that will stick with them throughout their lives. Sometimes I feel like we need to remember that, and kind of, you know, we get stuck on, hey, we want to win, we want to do, we want to do those things that everybody dreams of doing, but you got to remember the big picture. You know, I always look at our athletes like this. They sacrifice so much to be a part of this stuff that goes unnoticed. You know, parents get it, because they're, you know, especially when they're younger. You know, oftentimes, they're sacrificing, going and hanging out after school, those types of things. They get to school before the sun comes up, don't you? You know, they get to school, or they get to school before the sun comes up, they don't go home until it goes down many times, or bedtime. So, you know, they're putting a lot of work in, and you know, that's the kind of stuff that I feel like, maybe they don't realize it right now, but that's the stuff that's going to help them later on in life. That's the kind of stuff that's going to set them up for success. You know, I believe that. You know, our coaches, they can be some of the most trusted individuals in these kids' lives, and you know, whether or not they're, you know, maybe something's not going right in their lives, has nothing to do with sports, most of the time, they're going to their coach. And if you've been a part of athletics as a kid, when you're a kid, you know what I'm talking about, that, you know, coaches really have impact on these kids' lives, way beyond the practice field and the playing field. You know, they push them to be the best they can in competition, but they mentor them. Our programs, and you know, whenever you come across, and I'm an athletic guy, so you know, I'm all about sports and, you know, being a part of events, but when you come across people who maybe aren't so much, you know, think the schools put too much emphasis on athletics, you know, one thing I would say is, there's nothing that we do that brings the community together like our athletic events. We're bringing them together. They're seeing our facilities, they're seeing our school. That's when we bring the community together. So, you know, we want to do the best we can, put on, you know, put on a good show for everybody and do things right, which I feel like we're doing. Let's see, you know, too often negativity can find its way in athletics, kind of same topic. People complain about coaches, that's the top of everybody's list. I'm really not antisocial, but there's one reason why I try to stand off, because it's just how it is. I mean, I get it, people stand, but everybody can coach from behind the bench. I mean, that's the best place to coach, so I don't want to listen to it, because you know, I know many situations our students are being positively influenced from being on this team. You know, whether they're playing or not, winning or losing, athletics can be a great motivator to keep our kids in school. You know, I can speak for myself, you know, Scotty knows this, if it wasn't for athletics, I'm not so sure we would have...
A whole bunch of us.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, not that we made it, you know. You know, a lot of kids, that's the reason they're motivated to get, to come to school and be a part of it, have a little school pride when they're doing it. So, you know, kind of bragging on our coaches and how they're impacting our students' lives, you know, they may not always get to play in time or positions that they or their parents want them to have, but they are learning lessons, relationships learned, that will far outweigh any negative experiences, and I believe that, I've seen that. Been around long enough to know that's true. You know, one thing you got to remember is, we're not a small group. A lot of our kids participate. So, I looked it up through our eligibility rosters, in fall, we had 134 participants. In the winter, we had 72, and the spring, right now, we got 143 students participating right now. So, there's a lot of kids doing stuff. Right now, I've been here pretty much my whole life, and I can tell you right now, there's some exciting times coming on in the Athletic Department. Lots of projects going on. You know, we talk about facilities and upgrades and stuff like that. I can give you some updates on some of the stuff that's going on, and we're really excited, to say the least, about some of it. So, middle school softball field, okay, it's kind of been going in stages, and it seems to be coming along lately. So, here's what's happened recently on middle school softball field, is what I'm calling it. It's below our gym. It got a second round of improvements this, well, last week. So, last year, if you remember, we put up a big backstop. It had a pretty poor backstop. So, we've got a real nice, heavy gauge backstop, and that was kind of like, all right, we're getting the project rolling. Last week, we came in and we set the poles down the baseline, so the second round fencing is going to go up this week. The poles have set long enough, they should be back any time. So, what that's going to do is, it's going to allow us to put another fence, you know, a portable fence in the outfield. We can't leave that up year-round, because it gets way out in there to our practice football field to get 200 feet is what we're trying to get. But that is kind of where we're at on that project. We had 20 tons of red line delivered. That's, I think, our third round of that since last year, so we're really getting a nice infield. Coach Miller and I set home plate two weeks ago. Once the red line that we just got delivered gets spread out, we're going to go ahead and set the rest of the bases, the softball bases. Talked to Coach Pitts about getting some drop-down ones for the baseball team, so you know, we're real close to having a facility that we can, we can get real work done down there with our middle school kids, because right now, and they're doing good, I watched, you know, they're competing, doing some good things. They practice out in the field. They're rarely getting a real look at taking infield or swinging a bat live, so we're close. We still need some things down there. We need to contain foul balls better before we start playing live down there. We're going to have to get a net of some sort, especially on Mr. Colwell's side. We can't, we can't play a real middle school game, I don't feel like, until we get that up, and that's kind of the goal for...
Will that fence be able to accommodate a net?
Yes, yeah. Our fencing guy's going to have to come in and set another, one more pole, a big pole, and we'll be able to come off that, hit that, and then there's a light pole. That's the plan, so we'll see. But next year, that's, we want to play games down there next year.
Next year?
We want to play games down there. Mr. Bell, I don't want to bore you with all this stuff, but Mr. Bell is going to, and even Josh Owens mentioned, he might be able to help, depending on what goes with his new, you know, projects in the Mordot buildings, but they're going to help us build some dugouts. Nothing fancy, but we're going to set some dugouts behind those fences, and you know, at that point, you've got to at some point think about some bleachers, talk to Dr. Spence about that maybe, and scoreboard. They didn't have to be fancy, just a little, like we used in Little League, would be fine. But we're going to have to, and we have power right there at that pole, so you know, there's, it's getting ready to be really nice and usable, so that's...
Maybe we could get a sponsor for that.
Maybe we could get a sponsor for that scoreboard.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that hopefully. But I, I mean, this is not a, we don't need one like we have down there. So it's, it's not going to be, that's not going to be the, the big expense for it. What else here? The training facility. So with the middle, yeah, he's got some nice diagrams. But the other thing is we've got outdoor bathrooms accessible somewhere, okay, up here. But they will be, well, they'll be off that end actually. But, so when we do play middle school softball games, that knocks out that problem. So we don't have to have four or five days to use the gym. So we will have access to outdoor restrooms when, when we're able to play ball down there. let's see here, the, the training facility, well, let me back up and I'll come back to training facility in just a second. Sorry, I kind of jumped the gun on that. Middle school softball games, we talked about that. We really want to play there. But the high school baseball and softball fields, hey, if you haven't been down there, you need to go look at them because they're in really good shape. Our coaches and parents have spent many hours working on those and just, man, they look good. Amazing. I actually was talking to the ABA coach on the phone and he was, he, he used to have his kids bring buckets when they played here to pick up rocks. And, you know, that's kind of a joke when you got, those schools have to do that. So we're not, it's very impressive. A lot of work coaches and parents have done down there. You know, the track, you know, it's no, it's no secret that our track's not in very good shape. But I will tell you, Coach Wagner and Senior Gennady Dudo, they put in, if you haven't seen it, they put in a new shot put ring. So we've got that, you know, we've got some improvements going on up there as well. And it's almost, I mean, they're using it, but it's, it's got some more work to be done, but it's a much needed improvement. That area was pretty rough. It was soggy and muddy and they've made it nice. And that's, I think that's a nice senior project, yeah. Okay, so training facility. Today, today, the concrete footers were dug out. Wes was down there, he dug them out. He said, he's, and he thinks he could get them all done today. I left about noon and he had half of them dug out along one side. So if he gets the footers all dug out today, it's going to be poured tomorrow. So the concrete footers will be poured tomorrow. And talked to, talked to Brad today and he said our building package is scheduled to arrive May 23rd. So that's really good news because I've been staring at that dirt pile for a year, seems like. So we're, we're kind of getting excited seeing some stuff going down there. We expect the building to go up. We expect it to be up and ready for us to do, for, you know, Brad and Ethan and, and the guys to start working on the inside. And Mike, before the end of June. Now I know that's, next thing you know is pushback, but that's kind of what we're hoping. And that would be great if we could do that. If we can get the main space open and they can start framing up stuff, then maybe we can start moving some equipment in to get our kids in there before school. So Brad and Ethan, of course, they've got plans for tons of it, Mike too, but, you know, they're, they're, they're working on the layout of the plumbing, Mike's working on the HVAC. And as far as the inside of it goes, I've, I've spent a lot of time on the phone looking at stuff and went to a conference, got to meet with some vendors and looking at the different options and equipment that can go in a facility like this. And this is a 3D, 3D diagram that we had worked up. I just got it this weekend. And so this is to scale, like, you know, that's to scale as far as what we could put in and how it would look. That doesn't necessarily mean that's how we're going to make it look. We will make adjustments, I'm sure. Matter of fact, I've already told him a couple of things that, that our coaches said is unnecessary. So that, that's coming. You know, that, that's something that we need to probably, in the next month, we need to probably have a pretty good plan. Because we want it to show, we can't house it. I can't have it delivered. So we're going to have to order it and then put it in. It can't, it can't hang out on campus with us. We have nowhere to put this stuff. So, you know, facility upgrades, you know, are one of the most important things I feel we can do for athletic programs at this time. So, you know, we're doing some of these things. I feel like, well, I know they'll attract quality applicants. And you, it's really going to stir some excitement with our student athletes and I feel like it's going to increase, you know, some school pride. You know, I, I really want to see some, you know, some excitement. Kids wanting to be a part of our athletic programs. And I, I'm not going to tell you, you just, our, I feel like our, our game experiences are getting better and it's just, I think, I think we're headed in the right direction. Of course, I understand, coaches understand, we can't address all of our needs at once because I could just, you know, every department here can say, well, we need this, this and this. But we're very thankful for what we are able to do right now. Projects going on, we're, we're pretty excited. You know, that's, that's really about all I have for you tonight. But I did, I would encourage you all, if you get a chance, because I, they, you know, they don't hear it enough. Thank you, Coach. They hear a lot of negative, a lot of negativity. They, they work for pennies on the hour. They're good to our kids. And, you know, it's very important. It's hard to find PE teachers, coaches. You know, you don't have to be a PE teacher to be a coach, but our college, you know, colleges in Missouri, PE majors are, there are not very many of them anymore. And, you know, we need to start trying to make it a, you know, recruit, you know, we want to recruit good people. So, you know, thank you, Coach. They do an awesome job with our kids. Pick an event, and I know you guys do, I see you there, but, you know, go support them, get out there and they, they, they notice that stuff. And try to go to a game if you get a chance and, and support them this spring and next fall. But, you know, I can speak for myself and the coaches. We thank you guys for the support that you're giving us and we know we have a supportive board. So I thank you for letting me come.
Hey, I have a question. Ready?
Josh told me not to take questions, but okay. Josh told me to suss for compliments, not.
Down there at the baseball field, softball field, it's on city property.
Right. Where do we have control, where we don't have control? That's, you know, you're talking about parents spending a lot of money, they're, which is good. I'm proud that people donate. Where do we safeguard a lot of this stuff when it's through that? Where? You know, that's been a big topic this year because we've had some issues down at the ball, down at Booster. But, you know, we've had some vandalism and things like that in our dugouts and shed buildings. And, you know, I did, in a perfect world, we'd have our ball fields right over here on campus and we don't. So we're, we have to do our best to keep it accessible to the community. We got to keep the city involved to a certain extent. But they're, I mean, you know, they're, they're okay with, with us doing upgrades and trying to make it more, you know, our own to the point that they would probably partner with us on a lot of stuff. But, you know, as far as like, what specifically are you asking?
Well, it's, it's like, you know, parents are spending money.
Right.
Is the city matching this or is the school itself matching what the parents are doing? We're, I want to make sure we're doing our part along with the parents. And the city is not letting us flip the whole bill for their stuff.
I think, I think the city is real good with us about, if we went to the city and said, listen, we need, well, for real, let's use this as an example. I need some bleachers down here. I'd like to have two of those bleachers that are down there and paint them and make them nice and set them down here. And then get some nicer ones for, for Booster. That would take a little partnering with the city. I feel like they would probably be willing to work with us. They told me they had those built, so I don't know if it's something we can build again or buy our own. I don't know. But that's something, you know, we, we could look into.
The city's usually a pretty good department with like the tennis courts. We're getting ready in June to resurface those and we go 50-50 with the city. Because that's something we use for boys and girls tennis, but obviously the community uses that as well.
I get that, just no one makes.
They're, yeah, they're, they're usually pretty good department with us and then we do lock up, I mean, they got broken into, but we do lock up our, our equipment and try to take care of those facilities down there.
And the dugout on the, or on the visitor's side of the baseball field, when we're going to do something about that? You know, plans? I know it may be not your deal, but we're talking.
We all get some cash, we can do it tomorrow. The thing is, we can't do everything at once. We, we just can't, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. We got to sit down and decide, all right, what, what do you want to do next year? What, what do, because we can't, I, at least my budget can't, his might be able to, I don't know. Mine can't just go down there and say, we're, we're going to make this thing like a, you know, like Ozarks or somebody. So we got to decide what is most important and then we might be able to do that as a school. You know, there are times that sometimes I think, man, I wish they'd asked. I probably could have had that done, but they've already spent the money and done it, you know what I'm saying? So, I mean, there's some of that, but I, I think that we, we could definitely help out, you know, with any, any of our athletic programs facilities. We just can't do it all at once. So. I don't know if that helps you answer the question.
I want to make sure we're protected down there, you know, we're, city don't pull out, you know, it's a testament that they're not a contract of sorts. You know, if it could be or something that protects us.
So far it's been a good relationship. There, I mean, it's been a good relationship so far. So I don't, I don't see any issues there. They, they're going to support whatever we recommend within reason, I would imagine, so.
I would think nobody uses it more than the school or the community.
Well, I guess the YMCA uses it.
But there's got to be a lot of work and, you know, our kids go down there and do whatever they want on it when we're not on it.
That, that hurts. That's, that's been talked about and I, I think that, well, we're, we're trying to get it to where we can have a little more control of.
Yeah, I think baseball.
Right. We, we don't want bikes, you know, you know, put skid marks running all over that grass in field. You know, people digging sandcastles on the softball field, which has happened. It's hard. It's not ideal. I mean, no.
But they don't have to let us do that.
Right.
They're allowed to figure out their own place.
You know, the, the money donated by parents isn't much appreciated. It's donated. It's voluntary. Everybody wants to make it better and there's some risks involved in doing that.
Yeah, it's, it's much appreciated because, you know, we can do a lot, we can't do it all. And, you know, they offer a lot of, you know, not only do they donate money, they're working too, you know, so. If we're making the best of it, it's really nice. It's not ideal. I wish we had ball field on our campus, I guess, but that's, that's not happening, so.
Well, I think if you do have needs though, down there, put together something and bring it to, bring it to us and we'll do what we can to help.
Appreciate that. I got a real quick comment. I didn't play sports in school and so the first, my first experience was it is with my daughter there. And I just, it's amazing to me how much time and effort a coach puts into kids and stuff. And I've seen it with Scotty too, you know, coaching our, our daughters and, and basketball and stuff. And so I just, you know, kudos to your coaches, your programs and what you got going on. Because they, they put a lot of time, a lot of effort in and they do a lot of work. And, you know, you talked a lot about winning, which I think is the ultimate goal. But one of the most important things I watched my daughter do was lose and, and she, she delivered the, the losing point. And, you know, I watched her cry and then I watched her get back out there for another set, you know, and, and take that on. So those life lessons, I didn't, I didn't have those whenever I was in, in school. But I, and so I never understood them until this, this time in my life, whenever I see my kid go through that. So you guys have an important job, an important role and, and I don't, I don't think coaches, you know, like you said, are, are often appreciated enough in what they do.
I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, that's one reason I, I'd say, you know, if you get a chance, thank one of them. Because they, they do work hard and they do care about the kids, you know? One thing we, we talk about is we're trying to remind, you know, and the coaches, you know, whenever times are maybe down or whatever, we, we mention, you know, you got to remember that we're here for the kids, they're not here for us. So we really want to, you know, we want to, we want to be there for the kid. It's their experience. We want to help them be as good as they can be, you know? And some of them, some of them, you know, maybe they're not there to get as good as they can be. So, you know, everybody's in it for different reasons. They just maybe some of them just want to be a part of the team. But that's okay too, because there's value in just being a part of the team and being, you know, learning those, those types of, you know, grinding, you know, on days you don't feel like getting after it. That's life, that's work. So a lot of good stuff going on and, you know, I'm proud of them. You know, I, I appreciate what they do.
Thank you, Mr. James. Thank you, thank your coaches.
Appreciate you coming out and taking your time. There's so much excitement right now.
I appreciate it. Thank you for having me.
That ball field, they're, they're using two parking lots down there right now. It's such a nice.
It's not, luckily Yarbers, okay with everybody parking.
I've always waited for that, although we've never got it.
They had lots of patrols right now.
Yeah.
It's a little bit.
I remember when Yarbers went in, people were worried about them using the city parking lot.
Yeah, we're using theirs, yes. It's a good thing.
We'll go on to our other administrative reports. We have the assistant principals here. We appreciate the job that you guys do. I know last week, wasn't it?
Assistant Principal's week. No referrals that week, right?
No, they, they got the week off.
Sure. They do a great job. We appreciate it.
All right, let's start with reversal. Let's start with the fours.
All right, yeah, there's a lot going on in the high school. Just a couple of things real quick. Softball team, they won their tournament. The, I think it's our first, is it our first annual Willow Springs?
First annual.
And augury.
No, I don't know if it's a, there's a name to it yet, but we won that tournament and softball's off to a really good start. The baseball team got third in the Hartville tournament this last weekend and they were, I think they lost a game in the bottom of the seventh to go to the championship game over there. And the close game, it comes down to in baseball, it's a kind of, with the pitch count and stuff like that. If they had their guys to throw, I think, I think they had a good chance in the tournament. I watched, I went over and watched them play and they did a good job. They beat Salem tonight unless there was a blow up with two outs left. They were at 4-1 and I don't know the last time that they beat Salem. So baseball's off to a good start as well. The choir sang at the Cardinals game on Saturday, I think it was Saturday, Springfield Cardinals game. And Mr. Haji was talking about that a little bit today. He was awfully excited about that. We took a group to Branson on a school visit. It was Mr. Schmidt and myself and we took a group of teachers and we took four, was it four students? No one, you went?
Yeah, it was four of us.
Four, four students. We, we wanted to go on a school visit and we wanted to go to a school that was, we looked at Branson and they're, actually they're similar on our, like our free and reduced. They had a lot of numbers and stuff like that as far as, as far as they deal with some similar stuff we deal with. Now they're on a lot, much larger scale than we are. So we went down there for a day and they rolled out the red carpet for us. It was awesome. They, they took time out of their day. They had stuff set up. We sent them kind of an agenda of what we were, wanted to look for. They had teachers lined up to meet with our teachers. They had kids lined up to take our kids around campus. Mr. Schmidt and I met with Dr. Harris, their high school principal, for the, for the morning. And then they had a big meal for us in the library for lunch. So we really appreciate them and we, we took away a lot of stuff. You know, there's a lot of stuff down there that, you know, obviously that is beyond what we can do. But what we found was we did, we do some stuff better than them. That's what we, we, we kind of came away with. But every, every group, we had each teacher send us back some feedback of what you got. And then every group and every teacher that went was really sent back a lot of good positive feedback and learning stuff from that. And I know, just taking stuff from the principal, I learned a lot of things. Mr. Schmidt, we looked at some, how they did some RTI, stuff like that. Some stuff we're going to be doing in the future. So that was a good, good event. Coming up, we got a lot of stuff coming up in April. It's about to get real crazy here, April and into May. Dr. Spence, you have that tomorrow. We've got a community showcase and it's a pretty big deal. It's the first time we've done this. The FBLA or Ms. Coach Lee and her group made this video, kind of to give you an idea of what's going to be happening at the, at the gym tomorrow night, so if you don't play that.
The first annual Willow Springs School Showcase will be held April 11th. Here is your receipt. The month that you need to see this known as the home of the Willow Springs earthsport. But for the evening, it is home of the Willow Springs showcase, demonstrations, three trucks, and at the heart of it all, the community. Our agricultural classes, our CCL and FBLA clubs, and the programs implemented at the school will be on display for our community to see. There have been so many great opportunities provided to our school. We would love for our community to have an inside look at all of them. Not only is our high school involved on this night, but our elementary and middle schools have joined us. Their artwork and classwork will be on display along with other projects. All these experiences and opportunities would not be possible without our community. So when you come to join us on April 11th, you are not only seeing our work, but your efforts being put into play at other schools. Can't make it at 5:30? That's okay. Come see us anytime between 5:30 to 8:00. Thank you.
I really encourage you guys to come out to that tomorrow, 5:30 to 8:00. Like I said, there's going to be food trucks out there. This is going to be elementary through high school. We've been, we have students, at least they say they're leaving school to do that high school service, hand out flyers to local businesses. We've been, we have students, at least they say they're leaving school to do that high school service, hand out flyers to local businesses the last few weeks. I think it's gonna be a great deal. I went in there today. They're already setting up most of the stuff. And we really wanna just, you know, promote our brand and promote our school to the community. And this is an opportunity for people to come in and, and you know, this, you know, kinda post-COVID stuff, get in here and see what your kids are doing. And we've got it from elementary to high school. So it's gonna be a good deal. And we've got, there'll be some codes you can scan with your phone. Um, I think they're gonna be hanging up on the wall, like pictures, something like that. So you can give feedback to, to us so we know what we need to improve on or what you liked about it. So that's tomorrow. Um, got prom coming up April 22nd. Uh, we're, uh, the Rural School Fair at Junction Hill. Um, we'll take a group down there and meet with all the, the rural schools for a whole day. And I think an evening, then the parents come in that evening. It's a full day event. Senior Project Night's not too far off, April 27th. Then we're all in the May with senior banquet, graduation, and then Transition Day. So it's, it's crazy, but you know, twenty-some days of school left and there's gonna be a lot happening in these twenty-somedays. So we're going well and excited, excited for this next month.
Graduation is the fifth?
Yes. Really a fun time in the high school and these guys are, are doing a great job. I really appreciate their willingness to find another school, to go look at, at what they're doing. And they're always looking for ways to improve and that's what all of our, our buildings are doing this year.
What was the one thing that you took away you'd like to see in our school?
From Branson? Oh goodness.
Besides the money.
Besides they have like turf playgrounds? You know, I've, hard to put a, put a, just a finger on one thing. I felt like the overall, uh, they have, they have a ton of involvement, like from, 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 you know, Robert was talking about it. It was not even on the sports side of things, but you know, everything from their fine arts to everything. I felt like a major involvement from many, many kids. And you know, that's my, that's my goal too. You know, I'm a coach and sports guy, but I think that's, I think there's, I mean, there's data to the back end. Kids are involved. They're more successful and, and, and so I felt like down there, and actually we talked to them about, you know, student involvement. You know, what do you guys do? We talked to them about anything from pep clubs to they have, um, one thing I saw, they had a communications director. And now they have, they have two for the whole, for the whole Branson School District. That's a lot of buildings. And they were there waiting on us at the door, taking pictures of us walking in. And they were in there taking pictures of our kids with their, did they take pictures of you guys, Nolan? Take pictures. And we were all over the Branson website by the end of the day. Um, so I like that. But obviously there's, there's a lot of things, but there was things that we sat down and we looked at them like, hey, we're, we're a little, but we're a little better than them at this stuff.
Do you feel like that, that us being in a rural area keeps kids from coming back in to be involved sometimes? Is that?
They seem like it would come back involved like the teacher.
Well, I mean, they go home on a bus and then there's the distance to get back in the evening.
That's a big district though.
It's big. It's vast. Yeah. Um, it's, uh, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Not as big as ours, but.
I don't know if they can resist us as much, but yeah, they're, they have a large school district there. And really actually, to be honest with you, just cause I've, I've got some history from that school, their, actually their sports numbers are not their most, they're, they're kinda down. Like their, their girls and boys basketball is not what you'd expect or football, but more or less the other side of things are major down there that I kinda come to realize the time I've been involved with it, Branson, so.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coaching.
And thank you for getting to the kids and all, continuing to try to encourage more, uh, cause it is important. All right, uh, Mr. Cochran.
Middle school, yeah, we're rolling along, having a really good time. We had our pep rally last week for our spring sports. Uh, our final pep, pep rally for our eighth graders. And again, if you haven't been to a middle school pep rally, they're epic. So we, uh, we raise the roof and have a good time.
It gets loud.
Yeah, it gets loud. And, but that's a good thing. Uh, we recognized all our teams. You know, baseball, our boys' baseball, they're playing well, a very competitive group, group of kids and a lot of numbers there too. So we're really excited about that and moving them up into high school. Middle school softball, uh, our numbers are down there, but they're, they're trying hard and we had to get a little creative there. But, uh, they won tonight, so, uh, moving in the right direction. And I, you know, again, like they said, our coaches are, are doing a good job with those groups and, and bringing them up and, and making them competitive. Uh, one of our, uh, big celebrations was our chess club, um, finished top ten in the state, middle school chess club. And so we were really excited about that and some kids that, uh, you normally wouldn't see involved in some things are, you know, are really involved in that and, and excelling. So that was, uh, really exciting too. Um, to be able to recognize those kids in front of everybody and I think they really enjoyed it too in our pep rally. Um, we're coming up on map testing, uh, getting ready for that. So everything's kinda switching gears towards that right now. Our, uh, seventh and eighth grade, uh, starts April 28th. Our fifth and sixth is April 24th. So we're getting some creative, gonna do some incentives for that, uh, to get them there, get them trying real hard. And so looking forward to that. And teachers gearing up to that. We had our PD day today, uh, went really well. We had a really good time. Officer Moore, uh, did his training, uh, on school shooting and things like that, and that was very, very good. We're really lucky to have him, uh, in our district and being able to provide that PD training. Our teacher to teacher observations were, I, you know, I don't know that it's been done in the past, but we're really putting an emphasis on that. And, uh, that's going really well. So a teacher visits another teacher, does an observation and then meet together, uh, with us, of course. And, uh, we're wrapping that up and that's been very, very positive. As a middle school, we're trying to really work with, uh, elementary and with the high school too. And so we've been setting up meetings with, uh, some teachers there and having our teachers observe. Uh, I've been going down and, you know, sitting in on lunch, just so our fourth graders will be able to get a face, you know, a name and a face. And kinda greeting them and sitting down and talking with them. So we're trying to really bridge those gaps on the bottom end and on the top end to, to really get our kids transitioning through the middle school, uh, efficiently. And making that easy, easy for them. Um, we got our Springfield Cardinals, uh, group going, uh, a couple of weeks. Let's see, that was, um, I don't even know what the date of that is.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. And ninety-eight percent attendance and, uh, we had ninety students qualify for that. And that's no, I mean, no excuses involved in that. That's just straight ninety-eight percent attendance. So I, we were really impressed with that number of, of students that we had that qualified for that trip. And that's, that's gonna be a, a fun trip for them.
I think that's a good incentive too. Cause I heard junior high kids like talking about that, like.
Oh yeah, they use, they, they talked about it serious.
We gotta be there if they wanna go.
Yeah, they talked about it real serious. Um, so that's a good thing. You know, you can see our student to the month on there, um, do that every month. Yeah, you know, spring sports are really going wide open, so, you know, we're having a good time with that and attending a lot of ballgames and.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Cochran?
Thank you. Job well done.
Mr. Flom.
I think it's kind of a consensus. It's a busy time of the year in the elementary, just like it is middle school and high school. I'll start with celebrations. Uh, we just finished up our Teacher Proud Tuesdays with, uh, Ms. Crystal Sardar in the kindergarten. She does an awesome job with those kindergartners there in, in that group. We just had, recently we had our, uh, third quarter Positive Bears Assembly. If, if you don't come to those, we have, um, certain stipulations and then, then teachers nominate, uh, kids out of their class to get those awards. It's kinda neat to see that big, long group of kids up against the wall. And then we try to, um, recognize kids for the, the, the clubs or the, the activities that they do outside of school also. And during those assemblies, you know, whether you're on a basketball team or whether you're on the chess, elementary chess team, um, all of those clubs and all those activities those kids do, we try to recognize them. Recession, snow cone parties for attendance incentives are in full swing. So Mr. Rogers and I, we have made our fair share of snow cones this spring. Um, it is a very popular choice for classes. Yeah, I've made several of those, so, um, it, those are a good time. I'll add Mrs. Larson and the fourth grade leadership team. They continue to do a great job, you know, every day, raising the flag, taking the flag down. If you've never seen that, um, it's very awesome to see that. So, you know, if you're, if you're driving by the school district, you're driving by the elementary building, it's up there by the Hicks house, you know, right there in the corner. You might stop by at the flagpole right as soon as, you know, school's starting, wait, if it's a decent day and wait for those kids to come out and, and, and see what they do every morning. And then obviously they do it every, take it down every afternoon. So it's pretty neat for that, uh, that leadership team to do that, um, to take those roles on. She also does a magnificent job with that leadership team of producing, uh, their newsletter. If you haven't seen that, you know, the, they try to, we try to get that on social media. It's got different notes from certain teachers. You know, she asks random teachers if they'll have upcoming events, obviously words from either myself or Mr. Rogers. Just acknowledging things that are happening in the elementary building. They do a wonderful job. Uh, the graphics, it's just like, you know, the, the media productions team in the high school. You know, they're, they're, they all do a wonderful job of, of creating really good things, really good products, uh, for our building. The upcoming events in elementary, um, will obviously be a part of the showcase tomorrow night. We've got, we've got classes and grade levels down there also. Um, there's a lot of cool things that are going on down there. Like Coach Forrest said, that they were setting it up today, you know, getting ready for that tomorrow night. So if you have an opportunity to get in there, um, stop by and, and see what, uh, the elementary building has in there. Go piggybacking off of Mr. Cochran, um, the attendance incentive, uh, ninety-eight percent attendance at the Cardinals game next Wednesday. We had sixty plus. Um, we did it. We ran CIS again and we've got sixty kids. He's obviously got ninety. So obviously we need to add another bunch or two to that trip, so, um, that's, that's quite a few kids. That's, that's awesome that they have, you know, ninety, ninety-eight percent or plus attendance. That's, that's really good for those kids to, to, to be at school that, that often. Obviously Teacher Appreciation Weekend, all the buildings are just coming up, May first through the fifth. We've got different things going on in the elementary building. Um, Mr. Rogers and I will, will cook for them, cook for those teachers, one of those, one of those lunch days. Map testing is, our map testing is May second, fourth. Um, if you have a chance to run into Mrs. Brower, uh, she sent out a mass amount of emails today with, with putting all that together, all the scheduling, uh, working around special classes and all that type of stuff. And all the teachers are involved in map testing. If, um, you know, we have routines in the elementary building and it's all gets adjusted for those two to three, four days. It's a big, you know, undertaking, but we do a wonderful job in that building and Mrs. Brower, kudos to her. You know, she puts out a plan. It's, it's very detailed. It's very easy to follow. All six, seven documents she sent out today of everything going on. So she does a wonderful job of planning all that and everybody else involved with that. We'll have our third grade map carnival, um, once that is completed. Then field trips, that's another big thing in the elementary building that's, you know, we're, we've got third grade and going at the end of this, this week. They're going to, uh, Wonders of Wildlife. Second grade's gonna go to Small and Cave in Ozark. Fourth grade's going to Fantastic Caverns. And first grade's gonna go to Fun City. And then I think kindergarten's gonna finish up with some park days. You know, going to West Plains, uh, you know, during the middle of that, pick a nice day to, to do that. So to reward those kids, you know, for a fun, full school year, you know, we take those field trips and, and, you know, it, those are fun times for those kids to go. Summer school signups, that'll be pushed out this week. We'll run it through May 5th. Hopefully get that cut off from then and then get everybody situated for summer school. But yeah, a lot of things happening in the elementary building, just like all the other buildings and, um, it's exciting.
It's worth pointing out, these guys, you know, that we see their colleagues quite often, you know, monthly, but you guys aren't here necessarily. And just a great job that you guys have done, all the new positions you guys are coaching to and just a lot of things going. And you guys have stepped in and done a really, really great job.
Absolutely. And, uh, we, we know also that you guys have a, a different relationship with a lot of the kids than what the principals do. And, uh, you get to know some of them even better than. But no, we really do appreciate a lot of what you do goes unseen and unheard and, and, uh, that you make a big difference in a lot of kids' lives.
It's, it's been nice going down, down the halls this year. It's, it's very nice.
So you guys can come back next month.
Ms. Barker.
Special ed is busy as well. In a different aspect, we're wrapping up our end of the year evaluations and that type of thing. I know last month I'd said we were down a little bit and they heard those words and so now we're up a little bit on getting tests wrapped up. But, um, in addition to that, we have submitted our, our desk review things to Bessie. So we should know the results of those probably by early next fall on how, um, well, we did on our desk review for compliance and special ed. We did have the opportunity, I say we, uh, Mrs. Alter Matt, Process Coordinator and Amy Pollard. Um, we attended the Missouri advocacy day in Jefferson City this past month to meet with our, um, representatives and Senator about some key, uh, things going on in the world of special ed. And then they were not just special ed issues. I would say probably the hot topic was, um, the school choice, uh, initiative that will be passed. And we, it was very interesting to hear, you know, the things that we had learned in our training on, you know, of course, that we should be opposed to school choice and that type of thing, especially in the world of special ed, because the way the bill is naturally set up, there's, um, it builds indiscrimination for special ed students. Because students can be excluded even with school choice, um, due to disability. So, uh, but hearing from your legislators and people on why they are supporting that and whenever you're hearing the other side of it was very enlightening to us as well. For example, I know, uh, Senator Esslinger, when she met with, uh, our group, that she had talked to us about why she chose to support it, which I think was a surprise to most of us that she was supporting it over not. And a lot of it has to do with, um, her support for rural schools in this area, that she feels like it's a better option in the voucher system. And I would say that I would, if that was her take on it, that I would agree with that. Because whenever, if you support the voucher program for schools, then that money can be given to any entity. It could be private schools, Christian schools, that type of thing. And at least with, um, school choice, that the money stays in public education. So whenever you're hearing it from another side and how it doesn't necessarily line up with what our agenda is as administrators, we can understand their piece of it as well. Um, David Evans was very welcoming. We also met with Travis Smith. They invited our school groups to come to the Capitol and, and to be treated, you know, to lunch and Girl Scout cookies and things. And I think the high school is going to take a group to the Capitol after our meetings and, and meet with our representatives. We, we did get treated very, very well. Um, I'm, Mr. Smith brought us down on the floor within during session. We actually were down during the middle of a debate on, um, puppy mills or something like that we got to sit and listen to. But we were treated very well and, and it was good to have voices, um, from our district there, um, advocating for our school and, and the priorities that we have. So it's kind of what we've been up to.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you for your involvement with, uh, meeting with the legislators. All right. Any other questions for administrators? Nolan, you're off the quad down there.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll start talking, I guess. Um, I'll start off with the high school, uh, tomorrow. I guess all the sports are in action. We have, baseball is gonna be here versus Mansfield. I think that's right. Tennis and track are both at Salem and golf, big pool. So I think that's all the sports. I just looked at Misha before I came over here. Then for club news, FBLA's got a lot going on this month, sixteenth to the eighteenth. So next Sunday, we're leaving for state. That's in Springfield, uh, twenty-two. People are gonna go up there and they're gonna compete. Some of them are in multiple events, so that's like going in there and they're gonna pitch a business they came up with. Or, uh, they're gonna be given like, uh, the statistics of a business and see if they can like, in a simulation, help them out, things like that. Bear Media Productions is doing its first stream today, uh, for their baseball games. We didn't do the last one, uh, this league. I think it was sick, so happy to start doing that. Then some of the FBLA members in business entrepreneurship are teaming up with Wagner, uh, Lumber Company starting this month. They're gonna be doing some social media segments and promotions. So we, we love to help them, our local businesses and get more involved in the community. And then our podcast, Bear Cast is now full swing. And then our podcast, Bearcast, is now full swing. We have already put up a couple podcasts, recently we did the transitioning from middle school to high school. So Caleb and Gabe did some just basic things that are gonna change when you come to the high school. Me and Cold Solva did a Q and A session with some of the eighth graders. You know, they came in, they, they asked questions, and we answered those. And then, I'm not sure we did for the third one, I forgot what we did for that. But very cool to see some of that. And then the choir, they also had a lot going on. Saturday, the, you already talked about, they went to the Springfield Cardinals game, they performed there. Tuesday, the eleventh, they will feature in the showcase, the Metan Sable will come and guest sing. The, on the fifteenth, the middle school honor choir and Will Springs High School triple choir are competing in Fair Grove. And then the thirtieth, the Will Springs Concert Choir and Middle School Honor Choir. April thirtieth, Will Springs Concert Choir, which will feature the Middle School Honor Choir, Will Springs Concert and Triple Choirs in Will Springs Metan Sable, I don't know. Then the Art Club, Ms. Callahan is taking some of the artwork to Houston for Alpha Rotah, which is being held, it's held in Houston this year. The show will be all next week, and Ms. Bell, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Callahan will be taking the group to the show next Friday. They have photography and art entries this year, as well as some woodworking pieces. She also wanted to be board to know that it is open to the public on the fourteenth, three to six, and April fifteenth, nine to eleven, if you guys wanna show up and see what they got going on. And then prom, the twenty-second, at FLY Park in Stampede. The middle school, you guys hit on a lot of stuff I was gonna talk about. Library service project, they're gonna go over to the library on the twelfth, and they're gonna do some cleaning, organization, hopefully they know how the Dewey Decimal System works. And, you know, just whatever they wanted to do to help clean up. The Cardinals Word Trip, and the Spring Social is Cardinal, or Carnival themed, that is the twentieth. And then map test is coming up, and they, they know that can be really stressful for the middle schoolers, so they're gonna try to, you know, help them out, put some inspirational stickers on some water bottles to make their day a little easier. Swinging back to the high school, I wrote this down before I left. The nineteenth to the twenty-first is the state convention for the FFA, and there's also the greenhouse state, uh, the greenhouse sale is starting tomorrow. And from what I know, that it'll be open until they sell out, so I'm going, go and see what that's all about, I guess. And then schoolwide, I didn't have anything for the elementary, I apologize. And schoolwide, EOC's, map test is going on. We had juniors took the free ACT the school offered last week, thank you guys for, you know, the free ACT that, that's awesome. And then seniors are out in three weeks, so they're probably really excited about that. And we only have twenty-seven days left at school, so I mean, I think we're all very excited about that.
We can feel the excitement.
It's been a long year, I'm a junior, so I mean, I'm just kinda ready to get into my last year of high school, so. That's kind of a crazy thought, but here we are.
The podcasts are excellent, by the way, if you get a chance to listen to the podcasts, if you're driving around, hearing high school, middle school students talk about transitions and that kind of stuff. There's, and there's several other, just, they're good episodes, they really are.
How do you listen to it?
You can, they're on YouTube, or you can, wherever you get your podcasts, just search for, what is it?
Bearcast.
Bearcast.
Can you get it through the school app?
I don't know, but.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we can.
Let's look into that.
That'd be cool, yeah.
Let's make that happen. But yeah, it's, if you got a road trip, those are, those are some fun, fun things to listen to.
World history, world news.
Mr. Wickens episode.
Mr. Wickens, so that was a link, so if you're on a long road trip, you can have that.
Quite a lot of interesting things in that, in that one.
Hey, you know, hey, back, back up just a second, you mentioned Hospital of Art is gonna be an exhibition.
Yeah, what's that?
Would you give us those dates?
It'll be in Houston.
Yeah, it's in Houston, April fourteenth, three to six P M, and then April fifteenth, nine to eleven A M.
At the Houston School?
I believe so.
The nineteenth, fourth?
Uh, the fourteenth, three to six, and then fifteenth, nine to eleven.
Fifteen. And is that part of the Alpha Rotah?
Yes.
All right, nice lot, Noel. Well, I think we're ready now to hear from the FCC LA and his authors.
I forgot the concurs was going to happen when you're ready.
Okay, there you go, point when you're ready, but I'll go ahead and speak first.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm Lindsay Osborne, I am the new fax teacher this year at Willow. I graduated high school from Willow in two thousand nineteen. I was a member of FCC LA for all four years, so to me, this is home, this is what I love. So when the opportunity became available, I wasn't really sure if I wanted to teach preschool or high school, so I said, let's teach high school, let's do something new. So I was really excited, really nervous, cause there was some stuff I did not know about. But I jumped in, I told the kids, they went, I was like, I don't know, but we're gonna learn together. So this year has been full of growth and learning for me, for them, new adventures, struggles, but we got through it together. So I have Emma Wiles here and Stacy Johnson, sophomore and senior, they're gonna kind of recap our whole year. When I was putting this together with them, I thought, you know, we really haven't done that much this year. But fifty-two sites later, we have done plenty, I feel like, and we're not done yet. So they're gonna recap each month and kind of the events in it, so I'll go ahead and let them start. Hit it. Okay, so we'll start off in September. So we started off with the regional officer training, so that's where your regional officers, I was one this year and last year, but those regional officers, they get together, and we just teach the chapter officers just skills that they can use within their chapter, how they can help their chapter to succeed throughout the year and do better. So then we had a community dog wash, this was Sierra Deckard and I's star event. And, you know, the community just brought their dogs, and we washed about twelve dogs, and then we collected fifty items of pet supplies, and we donated those to the West Plains Animal Shelter, and we go to the next one. So then we went on a South Dollar City trip, it was career day there. And so we went to like this big meeting to start off, and we just talked about different careers, and it was also like a day with FBLA as well. So moving on to October, we'll switch.
So in October, we had our Sandy's Dance. We are own FCC LA president, one coming queen. Then our foods class, both of our foods class, and then the animal science class for Ag. We went to the butcher place, and then after that, we went to G N W and Town and Country, talking about the selling part of beef. Then we went to Missy's Farm, we ate some hamburgers, and then we also got to see her farm look around. And then we also got to go to the cell farm and see how all that went. Chloe and Butter or Jasmine had their food drive where they're starting there.
Okay, on to November. So we had our regional meeting, so that's whenever all of our, just the regions around us in the FCC LA chapters, they all come together, and we had it in Licking, right? So there was like a ton of FCC LA members there, we did a bunch of different activities. And then we had a like basket raffle, so they filled out these tickets, and then they won a raffle, this was ours. It was Osborne decorated, it was really nice, so. Then we had the Veterans Day Assembly, that was another star event by Isabella Davis and Marjorie Sheehan. And we had breakfast for them, and then we had a ton of positive, just feedback about the Veterans Assembly. It was all student-led, it was really nice. So then we had the gender reveal party, it was during a child development class. So, you know, they were just getting into the start of the babies they bring home, and just learn about all that. So they had a fun little gender reveal to just get started. So then we had the fabric marbling and the fax class. So they were just, just starting off there, learning about some different sewing techniques and fabricing. And then we had a storybook night, so that was Emma Spence, her servant. And it was just a really good night, they had a ton of book donations down there, and then they just had a night where they read to the elementary, and I think it, like, it was a really good night. And then there was kindness week, so we just did a bunch of different, just random acts of kindness throughout the week. And this day, we did a hot chocolate, we wrote some really nice notes on there, and then whenever the kids came in in the morning, we just gave them some hot chocolate, it was really nice. So then we had the Fall Leadership Conference, and this was in Tantera. So we went there with all the other, just chapters in Missouri, and we attended a couple of conferences, a couple little meetings, and just learned about just ways that we can better our chapter. So then we had a Thanksgiving meal in our food classes, both of them. We just learned about some history of Thanksgiving, and then some different, just meals that we can make for that. And we made some rolls, we made some pies, just all your good Thanksgiving meals. And then we have December.
In November, Emma Collins had her father-daughter dance. A bunch of people came, and they, like a bunch of the FCC LA members, so Emma and Deckray, Will took some pictures, and it was a fun time.
Coach Forrest's. Point out, he's very excited.
And then the fax class, they got to celebrate it, and learn all that fun stuff. And then we had our FCC LA end of semester party, we ate some pizza, we did some Kahoots for Ronald Senior Project. And then Exploring Facts did a lab, they made cookies, they got to learn the baking side of fax. Oh, we did a French toast breakfast, me, Kaylee, and Madison, Stacy came in, Alicia came in, and we all made French toast for the teachers in the morning, look up to see what they learned from that.
Okay, so moving on to January, we did our regional star events, so those members that did star events, they competed against the other regions, and we had some silver medal winners, we had some gold winners. So these were all of our contestants. And then we had regional officer election, so I retired, but we got some new regional officers. You know, Kaylee got it, she's our vice president now, and Madison Bay, I don't remember her position.
She is treasurer.
She's treasurer, so we got some Willow representatives going on there, there's just all of us that went on that trip.
Okay, I'm gonna stop one second, I'm gonna intervene. So Kaylee is our vice president, which means star events are going to be hosted at Willow next year. So we'll have about thirteen to fifteen schools next year on our campus competing for star events, so that's a big win for us. The last time we've actually had anyone that big was when I was in high school, and I was also the vice president. So me and Kaylee kind of bonded over that, but I'm really excited next year. So if you see a lot of people on campus in around January, just know it's FCC LA. Oh, so then we have Ronald Senior Project, you know, he put together Kahoot, and we all participated in that, it was a blast. He, it was all about him and his love for FCC LA, and it was really interesting.
If you don't know Ronald, you come by the school and then meet Ronald sometime.
Yes, it's a true experience.
Yes.
So, February?
February, we had our Sandy's Dance. Madison was our sophomore princess, Jasmine was our freshman, Izzy was our junior, and then Anna was our candidate, candidate for seniors. We have, Kaylee and Madison had their pink-out game, they sold a bunch of shirts, we made tons of shirts. They sold bracelets, necklaces, this was a fun time. Then we had our Valentine's Day grams, we sold fake flowers and the little poppets for all the schools. And then we also had our strawberries, strawberry sale. All the FCC LA members went around the community and like tried to get people to buy really good strawberries, and, you know. Then we had the child development class, went and saw the preschoolers.
Okay, I know that was supposed to be Sierra's slide, but see if I can find it.
Um, the interior design class, they took a shoebox and they got to make a room, they filled it, we all gave all different types of decorations, and, yeah.
Okay, so now we're in March, and we had our own little cupcake wars. So we had to pick out a flavor of cupcake, you know, the icing, and then we had to pick out a theme, and then we put it all together, then we had some judges come in and pick the winners of that, my team's actually the winners, it was really nice.
How were the judges selected?
Oh, well, Coach Forrest is one of them, he really loved our cupcakes. We had Mr. Schmidt and just some other teachers come in, I don't know how they were selected.
You could consider some other people.
So then we had our FCC LA state, that came from our star events, so they went and competed at the, competed at the state level, and we got some silver medal winners, and that was, there's a. So moving on to April.
April, we have our community showcase tomorrow night, we will be there tomorrow. A bunch of FCC LA members will be helping along with that.
Oh, that's Sierra's as well, okay, so regional spring planning is next week at BonTalk, so I will take Madison and Kaylee, we'll go down there with the other thirteen regional officers and their advisors, and we just plan everything for the next year, so we'll know when star events are happening, regional meeting is happening, what our regional theme is, like this year was, we helped too. So we bought socks, and then some of the profits from our socks went overseas to help people. So it's just whatever kind of company that they're working with right now, so we'll do a regional theme, a charity, so a bunch of regional stuff will take place at the spring planning meeting. It's an overnight trip, they have activities for the kids to do, like last year they did a scavenger hunt. This year, I can't really reveal what they are doing, so it's kind of talk secret. Advisors do know, that way we kind of know what our kids are getting into, but they are kind of just put in a room all by themselves, and we kind of step back and we watch them do their thing. This is pretty much all student-led now, with dates and stuff, they ask us, and we'll step in, but they're the ones who decide it, they're like, we want star events this state, and that's what we do as long as it works with the other thirteen schools. You don't know what happens either. Okay, so our foods class has taken on the challenge of catering food for Senior Project Night and Senior Banquet. So if you're a judge for Senior Project Night, or stop by for Senior Banquet, my foods kids are going to be preparing that. I'm gonna go with Ms. Wilson tomorrow, and we're gonna nail down the menu for both of these events, but we're thinking around, one night will be like a taco bar, and one night's gonna be tortellini, lasagna, all the good stuff, and probably the mini desserts that you guys had tonight. Stacy, do you wanna bring down regional star events, please?
Sure, so whenever we went and competed in our regional star event, so that was like the dog wash, the father-daughter dance, the book night, there was the canned food drive, and then the Veterans Day Assembly. So Sierra and I, we were in the Chapter Service Project Display, and we earned silver in that. And then there was Emma, she did Focus on Children with her father-daughter dance, and she actually won gold. Then there was, and she advanced on to the state level, and then she got silver there. Then we had Marjorie and Isabella, they're there, they did their Chapter Service, or Chapter Service Project portfolio, and that was their Veterans Day Assembly, and they also won gold. And then there was Chloe and Jasmine, they did their Chapter Service Project Display in a lower level than Sierra and I, cause they're younger, and they also got gold. I thought they got silver, but maybe they got gold, one of those two. And then we had Isabella doing her fashion, oh yeah, we forgot about Isabella. She, she made her own dress, and she sewed that all together, and she did fashion construction, she won gold, and she advanced on the state level and got silver. And then we had Emma and Madeline Focus on Children for their storybook night, and they also won gold, so. And then we'll go on to the state one, same thing. Like I mentioned, Emma with her father-daughter dance, she got gold, and then advanced on the state, and then same thing with Isabella, so.
Community events, wanna do it?
Here at the.
Mayor City Fest, Hall Fest, I know it's been a while.
Our FCC LA members went there, and they sold shirts and all kinds of apparel for that. At the banquet, we had Ronald, Stacy there, and they packed candy, but they handed out to all the kids in the community. At the Trump Country, we had Ronald, Stacy there and they packed candy, but they handed out all the candies in the community. At the Mistletoe Market, we helped.
Yeah, Stacy worked that one, you guys can switch if you want.
Yeah, so the Mistletoe Market, this is at High Meadows Venue. And we just, we volunteered to help throughout the day, it was really cold, really long day, but we just volunteered and we got through it. And it was just a bunch of different like booths were there. And we helped like take the money, give them bracelets. We did some other things too, like set up the watch table for people's stuff, so stuff like that. And then we had Spike Wars, we actually made the T-shirts for all of that. So all those T-shirts that they're wearing, we made those, there was a lot of them. I think that's all, so there you go.
Yeah, so busy year, I know we're not done yet, but we'll be adding more in with our projects that are coming up. I can send them to Dr. Spint so you guys can kind of see them. If we don't come back and may, I know you guys haven't mentioned us coming back and may. But anyways, it's been a really good year and I'm excited for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, thank you for something.
Thank you.
Well, no, I don't know about that. You girls were busy all year.
Very busy.
Did some really good stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you'd like to.
It only gets better, yeah. All right, so, in my first year, I'm learning a lot about school finance and school budgets. Continuing to try to find better ways to communicate that with the Board. The budget is such a, a large living beast that it's hard to know where and what exactly to share with the Board. So, at a conference I was at, I asked several other more veteran superintendents, what do you do to communicate the budget with your Board? Bolivar, this is actually where I got this from and then had Jamie put this together for you. And I think this is a really kind of simplistic way to look at it. Obviously, the budget is a lot more than this and we're gonna go into a lot more detail in the, in the coming weeks. But, this is something I'll try to do on a monthly basis, just to give you kind of a money in, money out. The total revenue, you can see that is just a little bit over twelve point three million. And that's for the year FY twenty-three. And the total expenditure so far has been just a little over eleven million. So that puts us one point two eight nine in the black, so that's good. That's where we, we want to live in the black, we don't want to be in the red. And that's, that's in the black with a little room to spare, which is good. Because as you can see, every month has its different, you know, the state's gonna give a little bit more in certain months. Things come due, so it's gonna vary by month, but we're, we're sitting at a decent place. We've got three more months to go in the fiscal year. We'll have no debt services in FY twenty-four, so that's a, that's a nice, because you'll see the, the debt payment slot there. You know, that's right around three hundred and sixty thousand that, that we've paid in debt services this year. So, that will be a zero column as of right now for FY twenty-four, so. More data coming and, and we'll talk about that more when we talk about kind of how we wanna look at the FY twenty-four budget. But that's just kind of a snapshot and again, I'll try to share this with you monthly. And again, thanks to Jamie at the office who put that together for you.
I appreciate it Marty, I think that's a, that's a good look at things, stirring all kinds of questions.
I'm sure that we talked about in that Finance Committee meeting, right?
There's a lot of information underneath each one of those numbers.
Absolutely. We could spend, and that, and this is just a, a drop of, of what the entire budget looks like, so. Don't want to get too far into the weeds, but it is a nice, just kind of head overview shot of, of the budget.
Obviously, revenue and expenditures change from month to month and for various reasons. And I know you can explain that to the Finance Committee.
Right.
Any comments or questions? I think it's great and I'm looking forward to us all becoming more familiar.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll all learn together. The other thing I have for you is the Health Insurance Update. You can kind of see that on your screen, but we've been part of the mask consortium since two thousand and five. At that time, several area schools joined together into a consortium to try to get lower health insurance rates. And overall, I think that's been pretty successful. But as you know, in any sector, health insurance just continues to rise every year. About three weeks ago, it was gonna be a seven percent increase, but our consortium, and one of the reasons we're in a consortium is they continue to, to work with the insurance companies and get that down to five point five percent. So it's still gonna be an increase, but not at the seven percent that we thought it was gonna be. The base plan will end up being six hundred and thirty-three dollars per month. So currently, the Board is paying four hundred and sixty-nine dollars per employee per month. And so that uptick, the employee contribution will increase from a hundred and thirty-one dollars a month to a hundred and sixty-four dollars a month. So a thirty-three dollar increase monthly for our employees. Now, when we have our, when we start looking at the budget for FY twenty-four, you know, that's something that we can factor in when we're looking at salaries and how do we wanna, you know. Typically, we've given at least enough of a raise to cover that, that increase in the health insurance. But there are other options for that as well, so that's something we'll look at. Again, here in the next few weeks when we start looking at, at the budget on how, how the Board would like to to offset that, that increase in, in health insurance costs.
Is there, is there, do we have a discussion or do you recommend to us at some point in time what percentage the Board picks up of that versus what percentage of, or is that all included in that, that discussion of raises and?
Yeah, I think that would be included in that conversation because, you know.
I'm not suggesting it now.
No, yeah, when, when we, and that's, and we're, we're gonna get to that, but the Finance Committee, you know, I'll set a few different proposals out there and, you know, there's different ways to, to give somebody a raise. You know, you can help more with their health insurance, or you can put more on the base and we'll kind of look, look at several of those options. That's, health insurance is another thing that I'm, I'm learning a lot about.
Yeah.
That is a, but it's hot going down, I, I know that. Any other questions on health insurance? Okay.
So this is just an update?
Just an update, yep, kind of where we're at. Non-resident tuition rate, this is something we do every year. At this time, we set the rate for a student that would come into our district. Typically, in our situation, it's from a sending school, so all of our rural schools, when they send their students to us, for instance, Richards is our, is our primary feeder school, if you will. They will send us seven thousand dollars per student per year for their tuition. In actuality, if a, if a student wanted to attend our school and wanted to pay the tuition, they would not have to reside in our district to do that. Typically, families don't want to do that, but that is an option. Now, depending on legislation and where open enrollment goes, this could be a moot point next year. But at least for the coming year, we do need to set a, a non-resident tuition rate. The SEA average is six thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. And then West Plains, at last check, I believe was about eighty-five hundred. So right now, we want to keep it under West Plains clearly, because we want to incentivize students to come here and the rural schools to encourage them to come here. So that's, Mr. Hall said that probably three or four years ago and I think that's still a good rate to be at. So I would recommend keeping it at seven thousand.
And Desi does give us a.
Desi has a calculator and, and their calculations would have us close to ten thousand. But, I don't think that's probably the, the right course of, of action for us, considering that the SEA average is, is sixty-seven.
Well, and you're gonna, by each student we pick up with a rate, do we get paid ADA on those students at a, at a regular rate? Or do we just get seven thousand dollars of tuition?
It's a good question, I have to check that one.
I think that the sending school still gets the ADA.
I, I think you're right.
But, but we might still get some other deal.
Is that, Marlene, did you just spend kids from other districts like at seven thousand or is that government deal or?
You spend kids from other districts?
Yeah.
We don't have spent kids from other districts, but if we did have, they would have to pay like the, what this is, you know, what this district enroll amount is. Probably the only caution with that is, is that on the spend side of things, is that if we allow other people to pay the seven thousand dollars to attend our school and we have a very high-needs student that moves into our district, then we cannot charge that student more money than it would cost. And those things, we ran into this with a student that we had that was a Richards student last fall that come here for high school. And since we provide transportation for our other Richards students and she required special transportation because she was in a wheelchair, we had to provide her her own special transportation and pay for that out of our pocket, otherwise it was discrimination. So you, there's kind of some fine lines in there, but, you know, sometimes those things happen and sometimes they don't either. But what we can do in situations like that is students that have severe needs, if they exceed three times the state amount, which would be that ten thousand dollars, so it's usually over thirty thousand dollars, then we can claim those students for High Needs Fund and anything that we spend over the thirty thousand dollars, we get reimbursed.
All right. Then I guess we're ready to move on to the budget.
Yeah, so the Budget Work, Budget Work Session, so kind of an option for you and you guys can discuss the better route. We can have a Bu, a Board Work Session like we've had in the past for the entire Board for an evening, where we go into a deep dive on the budget and I try to give you history, forecast, proposals, all of that in one big night. Or, we could do a Budget Committee Session as the Finance Committee talk through all of that and then come back to the Board with some recommendations and some highlights from that meeting. So it's, it's really, you know, they're both effective, just kind of how you guys wanna structure that.
I think for me, I would defer to the people that's not on the committee that wouldn't be getting that information firsthand on whether or not they would want to receive that, that would be my.
I think the first one should be everybody, then we can kind of set some, where we want the committee to go or, or something like that.
It's a, it's a lot of information, so.
It may be hard to present all that.
I'm willing to do either one, and yeah, however you guys want it.
What I would hate to do is to do it twice. We do a Budget Work Session and then we get into the meeting and we do, do it all over again. I think that our goal is to try to streamline a little bit, that, you know, we need to make sure that everybody is comfortable and has heard the information and that they, they will understand.
What day is the eighteenth?
Tuesday.
It'll be the nineteenth, actually. I know in your, in your packet, it says the eighteenth. And then I looked at the school calendar and realized the eighteenth is not a great option, so. I hate to do things on Wednesday.
So it's Wednesday the nineteenth?
It'll be Wednesday the nineteenth, if that works. And again, depending on if that's a committee or if that's a full Board.
Does anyone else have any preferences? Let's see, our committee is Matt and Jeff and Scott.
I kind of agree with that, maybe the very first meeting, it might be good for all of us just to, maybe helps with the general overall understanding. And then after that first meeting.
I would like to.
Then split it up and go back to your committee.
Then.
I mean, that's up to you all, but.
We're gonna be there either way, whatever.
It's really up to all of us, whatever you want, things to get, but I, I don't disagree with you. I think if it's something we're all interested in, we should all be there and we should all hear it.
But that's just the big first meeting, that would just be like the first meeting, then after that we.
Right.
When you have more, actually you go to committee.
We can, yeah.
That's, that's what I was suggesting, the same thing Adam was, just the very first meeting of all of us and then after that.
Yeah, and then we can do a Finance Meeting after that, we can do that. I just want to be respectful of your time and that kind of thing and stuff.
And that's at six?
Wednesday, April nineteenth at six. And I'll prepare a nice budgetary slideshow for you.
We'll come with all of our questions.
Oh, yeah.
But, but there will be questions and you'll have to come back.
Absolutely, yeah, I guarantee you I will have all the answers.
And, but, that's all right.
That's good, that's good.
What it's all about.
We'll work, work towards that finished budget and that's gonna take, that's gonna take a little time to get there, but that'll be the first step.
And if there's any preliminary information you'd like to provide us to avoid possibly some of the questions, you know, just to, that would be good to have a day or two in advance.
And if you guys have any preliminary things that you would like to see, make sure I know that, so that we can make sure those are, those are in there. Okay, I will prepare.
You want those to have?
No, I don't have that, write up a manifesto. Senior Project Night is, and I know these guys have already talked about it, Thursday, April twenty-seventh. That is, I've said this for, for years, back when, whenever I was an English teacher. But it's always that, the night, whenever it's all done and then watching these kids come out of doing that presentation, it just gives you all the feels because they, every one of them feel like I've really accomplished something tonight. And they may gripe and complain about it throughout the year, but after it's over, they all feel that sense of, of accomplishment and relief. And it's just a, it's a wonderful night, so if you can at all, please come. The Community Showcase is three thirty to five thirty, that'll be in the Bears Den. You can walk around, talk to the kids, find out what they've done, ask them questions about their project, ask them how much it costs. And the presentations are from, from five to eight. And if you'd like to judge, I know Mrs. Wilson would, would love to have you sign up to judge as well. You don't have to, you can just come in and watch presentations, but if, if you're able to, we always need some help judging, so. That's a, that's a big night, it's a big night.
Nolan, are you excited about Senior Project next year?
I was actually about to say, if you guys like have any thoughts about taking them away, I'm all for that. But I mean, you know, I, I, it's kind of exciting to think about it because it's my senior year, so that's kind of like the.
That's the capstone project, yeah. Do you know what you're gonna do?
I have some thoughts, but I'm dead set.
Well, he's not gonna tip his hand. Nolan, I can promise you, I'll do everything I can to, not necessarily judge, but to view your project, because I'm looking forward to seeing what you do.
The entire Board of Education will be in your project. And a quick update, Luke Mansfield, who did such a nice job with his presentation, he emailed me today needing some more information, so he's definitely getting on our, on the right track with that.
That was probably one of the most impressive presentations.
I soaked his hands and told him, be proud. He really did an excellent job for us.
For sure.
Just really, an outstanding kid.
It's pretty impressive, some of these kids, their public speaking abilities are impressive.
We're gonna sit here as adults and be like, man, you are close to it.
That's a great life skill, it really is, and they'll use that, no matter what.
All right, comments from our guests?
Edgar.
Anything else, questions, then we'll move on to items for action. On the non-resident tuition rate, I would receive a motion to maintain the non-resident tuition rate of seven thousand dollars for the school year of twenty-three, twenty-four. I'm Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then we need to set the Budget Work Session date as April nineteenth at six o'clock here in the Board.
We'll have some food available.
Is there a motion to that?
No.
Adam?
Second.
Yep. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, is there a need for executive session?
There is a short executive session.
Okay, so I would receive a motion to move into executive session. Okay, my real call.
Aye.
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 No. Okay, then we're back into regular session, how we receive a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You are adjourned.